Call the regular Dixon County Commission meeting to order for October 10, 2018. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Approve the agenda with the additional items to be is consider approval of documents regarding Diamond Vista Wind Farm, two, consider signing Form DKOT 1302 to begin the program programming of the bridge project, and three, which wasn't part of our agenda, consent agenda, was a check for the county attorney for $20 for Miss, I'm not going to say what it's for, but $20 check.
Twelve dollars.
Oh, $12, I thought it was 20. $20 check that wasn't on our consent agenda. I make motion we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Been moved to second, any other discussion? Not all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda amendments of the 27th meeting, wire payments, KDH, $150,384.58, utilities of $11,235.68, abatement of $322.38, and fund expenditures of $469,207.77.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved in second, uh, second, it's been moved in second. Any other discussion? The reason the fund expenditures are a little high, we have a couple of bridges that have been paid off. The Eden Bridge, that was, I can't remember exactly, a hundred and...
It was a bunch, but it was a bulk of the payments for the Eden Road Bridge.
Right, yeah, a hundred and some thousand.
I think it was one of the expenses for Eden Road too.
Yeah, I don't remember, I saw them too and stuff, so that's the reason the fund expenditures are, well, around over $469,000. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Commissioners comments and committee reports? Lynn?
Next Monday, there's a Central Kansas Mental Health Board meeting, and I will not be in attendance to that because we also, at the same time, have the Kansas Association of Counties' annual meeting, and I'll be attending a board meeting, special board meeting there on Sunday at Kansas City, and then we'll have our regular board meeting for the monthly meeting for Kansas Association of Counties on Monday, and then, of course, the convention is the next couple of days. That's all I have.
Thank you, Lynn. This morning, we had our work session, all department heads and elected officials, all the elected officials were there today, so good input on that. Last Thursday, I was out at Fort Riley, North Central Regional Planning Commission is doing a joint land use study. The drones and ones that are, the small ones, that are $400,000, and the big ones that are 11 million, they have a, they're going to start going to the Smokieo Bombing Range, and they have to have airspace, so that's, they're working on that, it's going to be a two-mile wide area that goes out of Clay, out of Fort Riley, goes up through Clay County, goes to Ottawa, goes through Lincoln County, just catches it, and then goes through just part of Ellsworth to the Smokieo Bombing Range. Right at this time, they have to have, when they're flying those, they have to have two helicopters following them, so if they're, you know, if they lose sight of them, or they're get disoriented, or you have to have a person every mile spotting them.
How big were the eagles?
The drone, the big ones, the gray eagles, the wingspan is probably 30 foot.
Okay.
They can, Armin, Armin, they have Armin, Armin, Ornaman, yeah, you know what I mean.
Weaponized?
Yeah, weaponized and stuff, but they, when they go, and the space that they want is anywhere from, it's from 4,000 to 8,000 foot, and then they have to get with FFA before they, 48 hours before, so they can have that airspace. You know, I didn't realize that airspace was that valuable, but it is. But the only thing that they have problem with is that it can create a problem for the radar and is wind turbines, and it's the magnetic field, so they don't, there's no problem with going that way, and they're eventually, they want to go clerk of Fort Carson with the, the big ones. The big ones can, well, they can fly 24 hours, nonstop and stuff, but the smaller ones, the ones that launch, you know, with the mechanical launching, those are the $400,000 ones, there's, they do them the same way, I mean, the ones, but the bigger ones, I mean, it's like a cockpit and stuff that you're setting in, and the smaller ones the same way, just not as fancy, and then they have the ones you throw up in the air, that's the old vent schools where they're at.
They control them all from the post door?
Yeah, mhm, yeah. But, so it was rather interesting, the unmanned, I mean, I saw the small one, they got four divisions up there, and the buildings were built for three divisions, so it was, the weather was bad, so they had to have them all in, so you had to watch where you're walking to see if it hurt your shins, but they do have places on them where they can put Armin, Armin, Armin in to drop bombs and stuff. But the cost of them, when they first developed the small one, they were going to be like throwaways, you know, so they've kind of upgraded those. As Lynn said, we'll be gone next week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, to the next step of the KEC meeting. Presentation of proclamations and other public comments. We do have a presentation, proclamation to declare October 2018 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. I will read the proclamation. County of Dixon Commissioners' proclamation, whereas approximately one in every 800 children are born with Down Syndrome, representing 5,000 births per year in the United States, and whereas while research and early intervention have resulted in dramatic improvements in the lifespan and potential of those who are affected, more investigation is needed in the causes and treatment of Down Syndrome, and whereas people with Down Syndrome possess a wide range of abilities and are active participants in education, occupational, social, and recreational circles of the community, and whereas development by the National Down Syndrome Society in 1995, the Buddy Walk, is an annual event in cities across Kansas and the nation, celebrating the accomplishment of children and adults with Down Syndrome, and whereas the North Central Kansas Down Syndrome Society has supported families who have children with Down Syndrome and desire to increase the support network and support groups of those with Down Syndrome across our state, and whereas the goal of the Buddy Walk is promote increased understanding and acceptance of people with Down Syndrome while raising funds for scientific research into causes and treatment and family support. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of Dixon County, do hereby claim, proclaim October 8, October 2018 as Down Awareness Syndrome Awareness Month throughout the county, encourage all Dixon Countings to work together to promote awareness of Down Syndrome and to celebrate the accomplishments of their individuals and their families. I move we approve this proclamation.
Second.
Been moved to second. Any other discussion? Not all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Brad?
In your package, you've got the one set of documents, which is the K-Camp loss report for the last four years. And just for your review, I won't go into all the detail, but one thing I noticed looking at that, right off the bat, was that we've had very minimal losses so far this year. I don't want to jinx that by talking about it too much, but here we're three quarters of the way through 2018, and we have, I think, we only had one lost document, so that's pretty, pretty good, so hopefully that, that luck continues. So if you see anything on that that you question, might certainly let me know, but they maintain that report for four years, and we've got some of the old things that are still open, but most of them are already closed, so. Purple Wing Auction, two weeks ago, we netted $14,000 for the loader, which was pretty decent. The i-beam sold for $1,800, and the meat plow sold for $275 again, so I think people made arrangements to get that stuff picked up, so it went very well. Also, on your agenda, you added the 1302 form to approve the funding for a bridge, which is in your package, it's also a letter that's addressed to John Goff from Michael Strummer at KDOT, but it's the award letter for a grant application that we'd applied for some time ago for the off-system bridge funding at 2330 Moon Road. That's a bridge that we'd applied for, and the action today, when we get to that point to, to approve the 1302 form, is to request KDOT put that into programming. They have given us an award for funding in fiscal year 2020, so it's a ways down the road, but that's a $362,000 project total, and so it's a pretty good award to replace a, a bridge, which is actually north and eastern Enterprise back in a, in a one-way, on a one-way road. It serves two property owners back in there. I think one of them is David Mills, and the other one is Sturces, so, but that's a good thing to get the approval for that, and by signing the 1302, that's recognizing that and requesting that they go ahead and put that in the program to get it done, so. You've also got your, in your package, your year-to-date budget reports. Again, as Janelle indicated in the department head meeting, budgets look good. We're reminding all the department heads and elected officials to monitor that as we get down with the wire here in the last quarter of the year. Sales tax is down a little bit for the month of July, don't know what that's attributed to. We are excited to see when August comes in, because August will have, will have a truck stop on for sales tax. I think July had 24/7, maybe June had 20% of it, but since August didn't open until August, we'll see that next month, but we'll just keep hoping for the best, I suppose. If you have any questions on that, we can answer those.
Going back to the, and I know we've already done our budget, Brad, our corner and autopsy, I know we went way over, how much more money, I don't, I should remember, I should have asked this before, but I didn't know we were going to have this deck.
For, for nineteen?
Yeah.
I know Janelle increased it, and...
I mean, we had $30,000 last year.
I think she bumped it up to 50, if I remember right. We bumped it up considerably, just because we are going over now.
Yeah.
The cost of those has increased, and for some reason, we seem to see, it seems to me like we're seeing more of them, I don't know.
Well, just looking at them, I mean, that's the only one that's negative, I mean, the rest of them are all in the, you know.
Yeah, and almost every month, I'm sure you noticed when the accounts payable list, we've got...
Oh, yeah.
Health bills for the mortuaries and stuff.
Couple more, couple more, about eight hundred bucks.
Autopsy, so it just seems as though those have been consistently increasing, so I don't know whether that's attributed to people aren't getting the healthcare, you know, normally that's an unintended death or suspicious death, and if it's an unintended death, we don't, normally we'll order an autopsy. If it's the people that aren't going to the hospitals and aren't seeing doctors who are dying more often, or because of the healthcare costs, I don't know, I don't have that good, so.
Well, if you do, let me know.
If I find out, you'll be second to none, so. A couple of weeks ago, Sarah Picking was in and talked to you about a concern with drainage on the west side of Ableen. I had John and Tim go and look at that, and we actually got a, I'll hand it to you, but printout of what they're doing out there, they're putting a, a rather substantial third flash storage in. However, much to my surprise, and we're much pleased, is they, on their design, they do have drainages addressed for the whole, their whole property, and they have got a small retention pond down in the corner that they put in, with a couple of pipes to slow and release that water out of the corner, and they've never had that before, so the water just ran directly off that onto the Picking property and the property to the south, so time will tell, as they get that completed, how that helps, but when we talk to that property owner, they have addressed it, and John was under the impression that he feels like they've done sufficient, taken sufficient care and designed to, to address the issues, so. I've reached out to Mark Picking, and we're scheduled to go out sometime here, hopefully this week, get meeting with him and Sarah, and tell them what we found out, so. I was also out, I guess it was Bundy night on the way home, when it was still raining pretty good, I drove out in that area, and I got some videotape of the way that was raining out there, so we're going to try to compile that as well for future use, so. The appraiser's office had been dealing with farm credit services. They had a 2007 personal property case that had to do with leases, that they, they owned some property that they leased, I think MKC at the time, they were spray rigs, and it's been delinquent all this time. Well, we finally were able to get with the right personnel in Colorado. The original assessment was like $4,000, the rest of it up to 19 something, $19,000 something was all penalty and late fees. They were wanting to negotiate with us to see what we would reduce it by. We agreed to reduce the penalty only by 10%, which brought it down to that $18,200 mark, and they agreed to that, so we figured a little less than $1,000 was a good trade-off to, to be able to get that settled, so they indicated to Mickey last week that they would be sending a check for the $18,219, and we'll get that settled, so once that comes across, you'll know what that's about, but we tried to use good judgment there and figured that was a pretty good deal for us, and they were willing to take care of that, so. I kind of briefed you in the department head meeting, and then we talked a little bit this morning, but Monday and Tuesday, we get in meetings with our detention, with our architects and the detention manufacturers and vendors, and went through and, and determined what doors and what windows and what locks and what hinges and what intercoms and what video cameras and everything in jail were going to be required, where the location would be and their capabilities, we had a good meeting, so that project continues to move forward, so, albeit slow, it seems slow, but it is continuing to, to progress, so. And then, of course, we had Tansy briefed you in the department head meeting, we've had some rain lately, you should have noticed, and it's been raining to the west and northwest of us, which affects us because of the rivers. As of this morning, the river at Sand Springs was, had raced two feet overnight to a level of 18 feet, I think five inches or so. The weather service is predicting it will crest at 27 feet tomorrow at 5 o'clock. If that's the case, we may see some pretty decent flooding around Enterprise, potentially some in Solomon, so it remains to be seen. I'm sure a lot of that is depending on how much more rain that they get today to the northwest of us, but we're, we've got our fingers crossed, hoping it doesn't get to that point. In anticipation of that, Monday, Solomon came over and got some sandbags from us, we keep a pretty good bulk of them out at the landfill in storage, and they, they took a pallet full over, and I know that they now have sand underground in case they need it to start nagging. Tansy had got a hold of the state and went out to Melford Lake and to the Corps Office, I believe, there, and got another pallet of 8,500 additional sandbags, just so we've got them on hand as a precaution, because when you do need those things, whether, it never happens at an opportune time, number one, number two, when you need them, you don't have time to go looking for them, so we try to keep quite a few on hand and have for years, so. We're ready if the need comes up, and at this point, we're hoping that the levels will continue to subside, and once it crests, they'll go down, and we don't have any severe flooding in our communities, so that's all I've got.
Thank you, Brad. Any more questions for Brad, Lynn?
Nope.
Doug?
On October the 5th, we took judgment on about, not about, but 30 parcels of real estate for the tax sale, and there were several dismissals, I think we had five dismissals that avoided the additional penalty of the $540, and we have three cases that are, have IRS liens upon them, and so that, that delays the whole process another 30 days, so as soon as the IRS time to answer has passed, then we'll be in posture to move the case forward to tax sale. And so that brings you up current on that one.
You had a, you spent, you mentioned last, a couple weeks ago, about bad checks, is that, is it a real problem, or just, I mean...
Well, it's, it's more of a problem than I've seen in a number of years, and, and that may be because we almost would have none, and if somebody made one, everybody who has a checking account can make that mistake.
Yeah.
And they get a phone call, and, and if that didn't take care of it, then a letter, and if that doesn't take care of it, why then it moves forward from there. So I've seen more come in to me that are, I would want to say, it has the appearance of being an intentional check written for the purpose of getting what they need for a tag or something from there, and then hope to address it at a later time, and a later time, and then catching up with them. I can't say we've had dozens of them, with three or four probably this year, maybe a little bit more.
But more than that, more than normal?
More than normal.
Most of them through the...
Enough that I've noticed.
Yeah, most of them through the Treasury Department?
I'm sorry?
Tags and Treasury?
Yeah.
Okay. I could see where, you know, somebody come in and think they write a check and think they might get the money there before they came through. Okay.
And then something went wrong, and they didn't get the money, and so we try to work with them to avoid those, the penalty fees and those things as best we can, and some do and some don't.
Thank you.
So I have...
Thank you. Notice and communications, we got a letter from a constituent on Medicare plans, want to know what we can do to stop these from coming to them in the mail. We have the monthly report from the Clarkland District Court on fingerprinting fees, reimbursement, such. Have a county newsletter from the NACO. We got our commission budget for how our, what are, what we're spending for the commission. We got a K-Works newsletter, some of the stuff they offer, sleep, general sleep, other ways to, you know, community trauma disorders, second radio learning and stuff. Got a postal cali, postal city, it's counties can save 40 to 70% compared to in-house printing. Got an invitation to the North Central Regional Planning Commission, which will be November 9th, it'll be on a Friday at noon, I, we're going to have two commissioners make it.
That's your annual banquet.
Yeah, but it's going to be in the afternoon, it's going to be at Clay Center, it's all off that.
That's my schedule, let you know.
Yeah.
They've got a pretty good speaker.
Yeah, that O'Malley is going to be speaking, so I'm going to see if Chuck might want to go, Scott, do the...
I don't know if you know how we're going to go, and...
Yeah. So that's...
If you just let us know probably before next week, we can speak.
Well, I'm going, I've already, of course, mine's paid for, it's only 10, I mean, I shouldn't say only, it's only meals, $10, which is...
And the fact that it's just a Clay Center.
Yeah, right, and that's on this side Clay Center.
Yeah, yeah.
We got the, Friday, the Friday, the 9th.
On Friday, November.
9th, yeah, yeah. We got a resolution from the City of Ableen, a resolution fixing a time and place to appear to show cause why structure should not be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished. And we have, since we didn't have a meeting, we got another county newsletter. You want to take, oh, you want to take that out? Uh, where is?
From North Central Kansas.
Yeah, that's from North Central, you take that out, okay. So Laburn can look at it, too. We have no resolutions, unfinished business, other business, consider approval of the project prom, programming request for the bridge replacement at 2330 Moon Road.
Again, that's your, the KDOT Form 1302, a form that will request they program that into their system and put forward this project.
Yeah, I'll just, Dear Goff, congratulations on your application for an office system bridge program to replace NBI structure of 22 letters at 2330 Moon Road, or Deer Creek has been selected to be eligible for funding. I move we approve the request.
Second.
Been moved to second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That's the next thing on your...
Oh, okay, okay. We'll go ahead and consider appointment of Nick Wilburn as Grant Township Trust Treasurer. I move we appoint Nick Wilber?
Weaver.
Weaver.
All second then.
Been moved to second, any other discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Additional agendas, consider approval of document regarding Diamond Vista Wind Farm.
I probably have to explain that one.
Okay.
Well, I received that, I got a call from the attorney that represents them, and what they're asking for is a certificate, so that if the county approves that, they would send that back to the Diamond Wind Farm and let them know that they had complied with everything that was required of them, and that's the purpose of that certificate, is for verification that they have complied and everything is in order as far as the county is concerned with the Wind Farm. And assuming if that's true, then we'd anticipate an issue for it, if it's, if there's some issue, would not want to approve then.
So who does the verification, actually?
Good luck.
Verification.
Okay.
Who does that, I guess?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
What we did, Tim, looking at the original permitting for the electrical service coming through there, we really only had one portion of that project that affected us, and that was the electrical connection that comes up to the Hope Substation.
Right.
So all those, my understanding is all the wind turbines down in that area that they're putting in will be feeding electricity up to that Hope Substation that was put in for the pipeline, and so there was a contractor that came in here early this year and got highway permits from us, and also the necessary permit, floodplain permits from Tim.
Construction permit?
Yeah, put that system in, they complied with everything, and been good to work with, we have no issues whatsoever. And of course, you got the letter that said that that Wind Farm was not going to come up at this point, those wind turbines aren't, but another one in the future is going to, so at that time, that, that project will have to apply for a condition or use permit for the turbines, but that's, that hasn't occurred yet, but everything that they've done so far in our county, they've complied with. And my understanding of this is to give them some tax exempt status or something?
Yes.
To help, and they have to prove that they've paid all the taxes in all the counties that they're involved in, so.
And that of equal importance, as far as the law firm would go, is that they, that there's no issues, because this covers a significant distance. because this covers a significant distance, and they would want verification from every jurisdiction that they had complied with every requirement.
So what I guess Lynn and I was wanting to ask, in, we're signing this document, everybody's, everything's been approved?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything, it was respect to that document.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Is, is above board, and they're, they've satisfied us, so, yeah.
That's what I wondered, is just who of staff had taken a look at it?
Tim, Tim, John Goff.
Give approval?
Yeah.
So the proper reviews done, um, I'd go ahead and move that we, uh, approve this document regarding Diamond Vista Wind Farm.
I'll second it. Been moved to second. Any other discussion? If not all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The only thing left to do is approve the check for twen- twelve dollars for the, give the treasurers to cut the check for twelve dollars. Uh, make, make the motion.
Great.
Well, there's one other thing, but we can still do that.
Oh, that's right, yeah, I, I, yeah, the thirteen oh two.
I'll go ahead and second your motion on the check and get that part out of there.
And move, I'll second the motion. I guess I moved it. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consider signing Form DK thirteen oh two to begin programming for the bridge project.
You did that one.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, you guys are, we got it on twice. We got it, we got it on twice. Yeah, that's what Wendy said.
With two weeks in there, I forgot that they gave it to board, so.
So that was that, was that the men road?
Yeah. I thought I'd done it already.
All right.
Is that K Donson, D K O T or?
Well, yeah, that was my double finger, and it was K.
You know, there's a lot of curveballs thrown at us on this one.
Let's adjourn before we have any more discussion.
When we go, we get out of practice, right?
Anything else to come for the commission? If not, I'll, any motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. Been moved to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.